I am here, whoops, because. Each year, City Council Bluffs distribute something called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And I know that you've all gotten a copy of this, you've all read it cover to cover, studied it thoroughly, and you have found a chock full of fascinating, informative, and compelling information. What we've done with that document then is to submit it to the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada to be reviewed against standards for all cities throughout America to make sure that it meets the reporting requirements for the GFOA and the Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. We received a press release and a certificate informing us that we had received an award for this statement, and I'd like to read the press release to you if I may. This Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the City of Council Bluffs by the Government Finance Officers Association for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the year ended June 30th, 2014. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its man and user groups to read the CAFR. I'd like to present Gail Murphy, who is our controller, with a copy of the Certificate of Achievement. I think it's an excellent achievement by the staff. I can take no credit for it because it was all done before I got here. But hopefully we'll continue in this tradition. This is the third Certificate of Achievement that Gail and the staff have received, and I would like to recognize them and congratulate them on this honor.
Thank you.
Nicely done.
Well, and I just would reiterate at the time that that application for review was submitted. We were between finance directors, and so Gail took it upon herself to step in unsolicited and go through the process. And so thank you for keeping our three-year streak alive, and we appreciate all you do for the city. So thanks so much. All right, next on the agenda is a Convention Visitors Bureau update. There's Mark here. Might not be here yet, or we'll jump ahead and come back then. Maybe this is a good time if you want to talk about Rivers Edge Park. I don't know at this point. I guess all of us received numerous emails, many expressing dissatisfaction related to noise, to parking, to litter, to some of the occupants of the cars that parked in the neighborhood and their behavior throughout the neighborhood. And so it's not the type of event we want to promote. We don't expect to promote that type of event again. As I said earlier, that I don't think there's any rush to come to a final solution tonight because we don't have any events scheduled until next year's Los Fest, which is on Memorial Day weekend. But I think we need to take steps to mitigate reoccurrences like that event. We've had six or seven concerts. When you figure Los Fest and Los Fest events on other nights, the Symphony and the Country on the River and two days, three days of that, I think it was a Thursday, Friday event, none of those events had the problems associated with the event that we had. Obviously, the lack of management experience by the promoter led to most of the problems. And so some of the things we've talked about is a resume of past promotions. The fact that they charged $15 for parking drove attendees into the neighborhoods to park where they could park for free. The security, although the police thought the security companies did a pretty good job, the fact that they didn't have adequate access points made the line back up in the heat and caused some potential problems, all things lessons we've learned that I think we can mitigate going forward. But we probably need to establish some policies and procedures to give a promoter next time that said, "This is what we expect." I know Larry's talked to Romeo, who does a lot of promotions, and asked them some questions because they go throughout the country and put on events and what types of things they experience when they go to other venues. Is there a maximum decibel rating? One of the problems was that on Sunday night, they played till 12:30. They, the police could have thrown the switch and stopped the event at that point. They had to make a judgment call. I think they made the right judgment call in that if you've got 15,000 irate attendees on your hand, you probably don't want to throw the switch when the headliner just started. So we need to adjust accordingly so that that doesn't happen again, especially on a work night. Those are things I think we can address so that the impact on the neighborhood is dramatically changed from what it was last weekend.
Included in the list of protocols or whatever is going to be drafted up, you mentioned the parking, and there were several complaints about. So are we going to prohibit a charge-for-parking situation on city land? Or what's the plan there? Because I had quite a few comments about that.
Well, one, the land's not going to be available anymore. And so it's maybe a little bit of the horse after the barn door.
Right.
Or the barn door after the horse, I guess. But the, you know, if they put a parking garage in, are we going to allow them to charge for parking in the parking garage if we don't own the parking garage? It's difficult to establish parking at Harrah's because many of the events book their dates now, and Harrah's doesn't have solid dates ever, I don't think. I think they, if something's coming through, they may pick it up and throw it on in July, and it may conflict. And this last weekend, they actually had two of their top shows attendance-wise that directly conflicted with, and so parking took over two hours to get people out of the parking area. And so, because they were bunching up against the Harrah's people that were also leaving.
But we could always, you know, offer up the Mid-America lot, and they can bus people in. And, you know, if they want to charge for parking there and then busing over to the, you know, thing, that's one thing, but yeah, without the land being available, it should take care of pushing them into the neighborhood. The only other thing I would like to know is if there's anything we can do that would, in the contract, prohibit profanity and incitement to break the law from the stage. I know you can only control so much with people's language, but they were actually, you know, inciting people to do things that were illegal, and the language is so over the top that I have to be convinced that if I were standing out on Broadway screaming those things, I'm thinking I might actually get taken in. So I'm not sure, but I'm, or at least up to McDermott, you know, I might have snapped. I would like to see if there's anything we can do, and I don't know if it's possible, but.
Well, we've asked Dick, and again, we're looking at the experiences of the Romeo group. Larry, I don't know if you've got anything you want to add? Not to put you on the spot, I know it wasn't your event, but you're the.
He had to hear it, though.
Caretaker of the properties.
Well, I think it's important to recall that this is our third year, and by and large, it's been faultless. And we can't defend the undefendable. I mean, last weekend or the weekend before was really bad. The issues about how you can control what people say or the type of music to play are interesting and are going to take some looking at. I posed that to Romeo. RJ said he thought he'd seen some cities that had tried to craft something that kind of walked the line between your civil rights and a neighborhood's rights to be close to an outdoor performance venue. So we certainly want to look at that, and we will. Because it wasn't just the volume, it was what was being projected out that was so difficult.
I wouldn't want to make any rules that said that we don't allow any particular kind of music. That would not be the right thing to do. I would just, you know, I would hope that we could draft something that would encourage those types of entertainment festivities to maybe go out to a West Bear or somewhere where it wouldn't be as disturbing.
Well, I don't know, Larry, you tell me. It appears that, you know, when we book a promoter, then we find out that the promoter has booked certain acts that we know from the past content that those artists have used in those acts. Is it self-obscene and offensive? It seems like, you know, we had a certain degree of forewarning of what was potentially coming. And so it took me about 10 minutes to track down who these acts were and pull up some audio clips, and holy cow, I had to go take a shower afterwards. I mean, my ears were practically bleeding after hearing that stuff. And it seems like, you know, that we should have had a clue that that was coming, and that if the same promoter is invited back next year to do a similar event, that kind of raises some caution in my mind that what acts are they going to be bringing in? And what is it that those living in those neighborhoods are going to be forced to listen to? And more importantly, when certain content is contained in these shows, who are the people that are driven to go pay to see these sights or hear these sounds out in the open next to these neighborhoods? There's kind of a cause and effect here that I hope that, and it sounds as though that we're carefully thinking through.
Well, we are, and I'm a little bit defending, and I don't mean to offend any of you, but this event booked a year ago, and this council approved the special permit. So to put it on Larry's back is probably not 100% fair, I don't think. And at the time, I don't think Larry knew who the artists were. I mean, it was the grassroots festival. The year before, it was 9/11, which is an Omaha band, and I don't think. 9/11, 9/11 was this year, 3/11 was last year.
And I will say, and Larry's, I mean, for as much complaints as we have gotten, it's stuff that I think can be fixed. I've heard so many more positives. I mean, Saturday, from what I've heard, everybody that went enjoyed it. I mean, I've heard a lot of people that said, "We are excited to see this wide mixture. We're excited for it." Even people in the neighborhood, some of them even said to me, "We, I mean, we get it. We're excited about it. It's not like it's happening all the time." You know, it's small things, like Matt said. It's the hours, getting the hours under control, getting the parking situation under control. Whatever we can do with some of the extremely, but, I mean, so I will say, I heard a lot of negatives, yes, but I heard more positives, I will tell you that.
And one of the things that, as Larry said today, and we've talked about this as a staff, one of the things that hadn't come up in the past that we weren't prepared for, that Larry said, he said, "I should have thought of it. I didn't. As soon as I did, we got people down there." But as they push the people into the neighborhoods, then the people either arriving and probably more likely arriving, they are drinking on the way in and can't carry in, and so they throw the bottle in Joe's yard. And so Larry said, "We should have been cognizant and gone down the next day and kind of walked through the neighborhood and cleaned the yards." But he said, "It just never happened before. I just never dreamed about doing it."
We hadn't had that kind of problem in the past.
And when we did, he went down, and we did.
Well, I think a lot of the people that I talked to that were upset seemed at least satisfied that the city was listening and that we're looking for ways to sort of avoid or mitigate some of these issues in the future. And I think that's the important part, is we are, we're paying attention. None of us want that to happen again, and we'll do what we can within, what we can do legally.
And I certainly agree with that. The city is listening. I've requested and received great feedback from not only yourself, Larry, but also from Chief Carmody, and everybody has been very helpful and forthcoming with information. And we may want to relook, clean up a second time because I received an email today from a family with children that said that they were finding hypodermic needles in their yard with kids living there.
They did say, if you read that closely, they said it was the country concert earlier in the summer that that was the case.
That's correct.
Well, and I guess, again, that kind of.
Well, and I'm just.
Yeah.
I know that sometimes cause and correlation don't match up. And so the neighbor found hypodermic needles in the yard, and where they from the concert, I don't know, you know, or.
I understand.
Yeah, country music's, everybody seemed to think that was an all right event, other than one person. I don't want to paint everybody with the same broad brush. One person does not want concerts ever again. But most said that they were accepting of the majority of the concerts. It just was this one particular one, so.
And I don't even think it was the whole weekend. I mean, I really think it was more Friday and Sunday. I mean, from, that's.
Yeah, that's, I get that, too. I agree.
We should be really careful, too, not to profile those that attended that concert as, you know, being a certain crowd because I talked to a lot of people that went and enjoyed themselves and had no problems. So, you know, that's why I say I don't want to rule out any type of music. I just think we should work on the things we know we can do something about.
It's more the logistics of it.
Well, it's truly balance, you know. I think folks who want anything goes. We can't have that, nor can we stop all concerts altogether. There's some folks who want that. That's not reasonable either. So it's a balance. I agree, we have to be careful. We can't, there's a fine line between decency, which certainly we can, and I would say must enforce to the extent we can. But there's also that line of you can't ban a whole class of speech either, except illegal things, obviously. Incitement, definitely, you can't do that. Because we have to bear in mind that there are different interests. But at the same time, we also have to respect the neighborhoods around it. It'll never be fully quiet if you live near a giant park. It's, it just won't be. I live fairly near a park, and there's traffic, and that's just partly living in a city. But at the same time, they shouldn't have to put up with things that happened that weekend. And I don't think our city staff can be in any way faulted for that because none of that was known. And I really think if you look at the promoters and what they had indicated to us and all evidence they had indicated to the city, I'm confident that the problems were not known by the city. We know them now, and I, speaking for myself, I'd have an awfully, awfully hard time ever trusting that group to be able to do it again. In fact, I'll say I won't.
They have other issues going on right now that they may not even be back. But I think the mayor is on target when he says that, you know, we can somewhat control those kind of events by adhering to the time that they stop and the decibel limits. And if that's what they need, then they will seek another venue in order to have the decibels and the longer time that they want. We can control it in that regard.
Nate, I agree with, you mentioned that we didn't have foreknowledge of the content of this. I know, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that we had council approval.
The worst song, we got the majority of our phone calls before the concert started. And the worst song with the worst language was a recorded song played by the promoter when they tested the sound equipment. And so it really, I had a lady, and one of the ladies who called and said, "Oh, my goodness, what's going on in my neighborhood?" And it was a lady that I think you probably all saw the email. She called my office. The sound got turned down. It was fine until about 11 o'clock. They, and Captain Widdham said that he noticed, being on site, as each progressive band showed up, they seemed to crank the volume a little louder.
Well, I guess what I was going to ask, Mr. Mayor, I know that on 13th of July, we approved a beer permit for this event. Was there another time that this council was asked to approve?
Was there a special event permit for this?
I would have had to been, right?
At the same time.
And it's, and I don't recall the, was the promoter laid out on that? And if so, was, were any of the acts outlined in that? Because, you know, that goes to Mr. Watson's point that we didn't know. And if I was able to pull up some of this content off the Internet, maybe we would have been a little bit better forearmed in this.
And I don't know the date when that special events permit came out, but.
I don't remember either.
I don't remember.
But are we legally, you know, can we legally withhold a special event permit just because we may not like the band? I mean, that's, I think that's a big question, and I don't think we can do that.
If I could interject, and I certainly understand the discussion here. And truthfully told, I don't listen to this music on a regular basis. So it wasn't something that came on my radar screen. Some of my people that occasionally do listen to it on the radio, which isn't the same as what you hear in a live concert. So were we 100% on top of this every minute of the day? No, of course we weren't. Have we learned a lot together? Yes, we've learned a lot. I think the question still remains, even if we had known ahead of time, what could we have done? And if the answer is there is something we could have done, then we need to be prepared for that now. Because is it going to be the last time somebody's going to ask to do something like this? Probably not. So we have time to get our ducks in line and see if there's something we can do. We'll be more diligent about understanding what the music is. And like I said, there's no defending the undefendable. But we're going to learn from this. We're going to make it better. We're going to continue to make it a place that everybody can be proud of. And more than that, we really can do.
I appreciate that, Mr. Foster. You know, there were a number of rather appalling scenarios set out, and a number of police calls had to be made to get people under control outside of people's residences. And I think what kind of distinguishes this situation, this matter a little bit is the fact that the neighborhood was there before the park was there and that we brought the park and the events to the neighborhood. So I know we're trying, that we're looking at procedures and getting some good input. But I just think we need to be very mindful and deferential to the people in those neighborhoods that have paid their taxes and have worked hard and want to protect their families and their property. And I have confidence that you'll be doing that.
Anything else on that topic? I don't see Mark yet, so let's review the agenda. Anything on the consent agenda that someone has any questions or concerns regarding?
The only question I have is, is Traceview Loop in the city limits? Or is that one of those things?
And that board is not made up of city residents. So I asked that question because I knew you'd ask that question, and Sharon asked that question because she knew you'd ask that question.
So unpredictable is what you're saying.
Yeah, they're actually replacing Les Bombeck, who did not live in the city limits, so.
Well, I know some of the commissions are unique in that way. Yeah, thank you.
It has to be made up of the area it serves, and so that's the county.
Thank you.
I have a question. I think it's on F, the property on First Avenue. In the write-up, it says that there was an offer to buy back in, let's say, in September, by somebody else, but.
June, there was one in June, one in July.
Yeah, but I don't, did we, did that come before us? That was my question. I don't remember seeing that.
I don't remember seeing it either.
So what happened to that offer? Was it withdrawn or? Okay, so we have two offers on the property right now, then is that?
The best way I could say it is you got an option. When you have an offer, cash offer, or you get a proposal from PCDC and others.
Okay, so that's what's being brought to us, is not just the PCDC, but the actual other.
Yeah, I think, you know, if you chose to dispose of it to the person that actually submitted the offer, that, and I assume Becky outlined that in the staff report, we can easily change the resolution to dispose of it to whomever after the public hearing.
I'm actually, but I'm supportive of the write-up, the recommendation that you gave for it to be a park. I mean, it's going through the image focus groups. That's one comment that I hear over and over is parks, we need more parks. And that serves that need, so.
Yeah, I support that.
At least for me, I'm okay with that.
I just want to know where the other offer is, and, you know, if we've had it since June. You know, is somebody waiting to hear back from us on this offer? I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, they are.
Also concerning the park aspect, and I don't know, Mr. Foster may need to weigh in on this, is, do you know, is there some thought that this become a city park at some point? Is this like a neighborhood association?
There's been no discussion of that. Larry has not been involved. I'm pretty sure Larry would stand up and say, "No, he's not going to take this as a dedicated park." It really is a confederation or loose confederation of a PCDC, some neighborhood groups, the par officer.
So they're looking at this as neighborhood green space, if you will, or, okay.
You know, and hopefully if they do it, that's successful, it could be maintained.
Yeah, okay, that was where I was going with that. Thank you.
The other offer was actually made by Systems Investments, which owns the property adjacent.
And that's a converted house. Do I have that right, the property next?
Oh, it's a rental property.
Yeah.
I don't know how many units in it.
Four or five, I thought.
Could be. It's a whole single-family house, converted.
I don't think it, I suppose it would have to be currently compliant with the parking requirements. And I know I'm putting you on the spot, so I don't expect an answer.
My guess is that, well, I don't know that, but my guess is it probably does not. But I don't know that. That would, it would need probably six spaces. I don't know if they have that in the back or not.
What's the zoning right there? Do you know what the zoning is, or is it like an R2 or an R3?
I don't know.
Okay, yeah, I'm just wondering, they couldn't make a parking lot, per se, on a city lot or on a residential lot, though, right?
If it was owned R3, they could.
R3, okay.
Yeah, they could.
If it was R3.
And, you know, and if it was adjacent to something they already owned, we'd consider it as use as both parcels together. So they could do it.
I bet, you're with PCDC, right? And I know you're not at every meeting. Do you have anything that you want to add to this since you're here? If you could come forward to the microphone.
Yeah, I'm on the PCDC board, and we own the vacant land just adjoining to the west. And our interest in it, obviously, you know, that's what we do, is we assemble properties, and it would be for future development. And the discussion of the park, we were approached by a par officer with the Council Plus Police Department. And she said they've been increasing their presence in the area. And she said there's an awful lot of young children that are in that neighborhood. And she's continuing discussions with a neighborhood association. I don't know whom. We're going to hopefully get an update at the meeting next week. But they want to put something there for the kids to use. Nothing that would be hot, you know, elaborate, but just something to draw them. Nothing that would be hot, you know, elaborate, but just something to draw them there so that they have a place to go, to do what kids do, I guess, for lack of a better term. So that's where the discussion of the park is. It doesn't involve, at this point, you know, Mr. Foster, any turning it into a city park or anything like that. We just, it's an interim use for them to have for the kids.
Okay. And in terms of.
Yeah.
While you're developing.
Exactly, exactly. And, you know, how that would, you know, how that would all work out, who would do what, that type of thing, you know, that has yet to be determined. But it's worth pursuing, I think, for working with them, so.
It sounds like a fantastic partnership. And certainly, you know, perhaps someday, its highest and best use will be something else. I imagine it probably will be. And that'd be great, too. But right now, it sounds like the alternative, I suspect, would be an attempt to have yet another parking lot in our urban core. And we have so many houses that we tear down.
For what our intention would be?
No, 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 I'm talking about the others.
The other offer.
I understand.
No, no, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
The other offer, I, you know, I know parking can be an issue in spots, but I think, and I think the mayor said it before, too, if I'm not mistaken, that it's more of a parking perception issue than an actual parking issue. And I'd love to see more houses and people there rather than empty parking lots.
Yeah, and to what use that will be down the road, we don't know. But that's.
Sure.
We'd like to be able to have that as well. So any other questions?
No, you just answered mine. I was going to have you speculate on what could be, but never mind. You don't have a pistol wall.
You know, it's, you don't, no, you don't. And just as you've seen with our other projects, it just, as time comes and the right opportunity, you know, who knows what that will eventually turn out to be. But to improve the neighborhood, obviously, and increase the tax base, hopefully, at some point, so.
Has the corner lot, do you know if it's been cleaned up? I know it was a brown field, I thought, on the actual corner lot.
It was a gas station.
Yeah, it was a gas station, so I don't know.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I thought, didn't Buchanan clean that up?
I think he removed the face, I don't know what it was.
But it's been in its current state for 20 years, I would guess, so.
Makes me so old.
I don't know what you're talking about.
And that's information we can get for you, too, if you need it. All right, thank you.
But I was alive 20 years ago, I swear.
Other questions on the consent agenda? How about the public hearings?
I think briefly on 4D, 4D1, I assume all of us have had a chance to meet with the developer on this. I know I have. And I'm always very happy to meet with people who are asking for a change. There was some concern by a neighbor, very valid concern about drainage. And they acknowledged and assured me that they know their legal requirements to continue to drain the property next door. And I'm sorry, I forget the.
Geiger.
Geiger, thank you, Mrs. Geiger.
Yeah, she's here today.
Is she?
Yes.
I see. Hello. I have been told by them, and indeed, it is their legal obligation, that they must continue to drain the so-called historic. And what that means, it sounds like a funny word there, the amount of water that it's currently taking by law, they have to continue, to continue, to continue taking. And they say they know that, and they would be held to it. And so I think your concern is being addressed. It's a very valid concern, and I'm glad to hear that they're willing to take care of it. As otherwise, I mean, I, speaking for myself, I wouldn't support it if they wouldn't agree to follow the law and to be a good neighbor beside that, so. And I didn't know if you had any, if that satisfied your concerns, if, does it? If you wanted to speak, I'd like to offer you the chance to speak briefly on it so that as we make our decision.
And as she comes up, just to clarify.
I hate to put you on the spot.
My understanding that when this comes back for the building aspect, that there would be some sort of replat or reapproval of the building plan or the construction plans for this lot? Would this come back before the council? No? Okay. And my concern on that, and I don't think this is at all, at all an issue, but if something changes between now and then, and the physics or the architecture of this wasn't working, and it was causing her a problem at some point, then her options are going to be much more narrowed at that point. So that's why I was asking about this. I support the project, and I very much appreciate the information you provided to us individually. And it certainly sounded feasible, although I'm a far cry from an engineer. And you would know the physical and drainage aspects much better than I would. And I appreciate your reassurance because the write-up from the city staff certainly wasn't providing me that level of assurance because their position was that, well, that drainage from the Geiger property would be going on to Veterans Memorial Highway drainage. And we've already seen how that's been a, pretty much a disaster for a lot of property owners up and down after a good stiff rain. I mean, we've had homeowners or property owners come to us and complain about that previously. So I just wanted to make sure that we were covering worst-case scenarios on that. And I see you looking at each other and nodding, and that helps me.
Because I would imagine they're really confused now you're throwing scenarios out there that.
Yeah, if you let Mrs. Geiger voice her concerns.
Yeah.
For the development side, I'd be willing to refer up your concerns.
Yep, because bottom line, if she's happy, then we're reassured, and that's right.
Good afternoon. I'm sorry, I wanted you to have the opportunity. I hope you don't feel like you were put on the spot.
No, no, not at all.
You had written to us, so I thought you should be given the opportunity to let us know if, how you think today, because it's important.
Well, my concern is, is we've been at the property for 57 years and that. So everything that's there has been basically grandfathered in all this time. And the thing is, is if they do take the drainage ditch, I have no drain whatsoever. And from the rain just this weekend that we've had, it's already been an exciting couple of days trying to pump it through the ditch to get it out of the lot anyway. And then they're coming and telling me that, you know, they're going to take the drainage away. Ended up causing a very high level in anxiety, I would say. And I'm sitting here now and finding out that you do have a plan, which really kind of reassures me and makes me a little bit more comfortable. I did agree on the road to be moved, and that, which is fine with me. Somebody else can mow it now. I've been mowing it for years, you know, doing the street maintenance, so you could say. But the big thing is, is the drainage, and even if it does go up on Veterans Memorial or wherever, my big concern is, is I have to have drainage. I mean, I will turn into a swimming pool if I don't. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I went over and talked with the folks at Leach Camper Sales, just on the other side of the creek. And I know that they've had similar problems in the past. And as we've discussed, you know, a lot of folks over on that side have similar problems just from the fact that we have a very high water table over in that area. So with that, please.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tom Slavodnik, and I reside at 2097 County Road 7, Uton, Nebraska. I would be the developer of the parcel of property that's in question on the South Point Business Park. And we have a client in tow to be the landowner if the property purchase is successfully acquired. What's in front of you today is a replat of multiple parcels of property. And while we're not the owner of the property, this process will determine who the end owner will be. There were several concerns of ours from a development standpoint. One of the concerns, the first concern that we had was the 42nd Street right-of-way, alleged utility easements that were in 42nd Street right-of-way, running parallel to, as well as the relocation to a southernmost portion of the property that we've negotiated with the seller to give up a portion of this current partial, be known as 43rd Street. Working with planning, working with Public Works, working with all the local utilities, the utilities have been found to be clear. They run perpendicular to 42nd and on the eastern side of 19th Street. The negotiations, as they're laid out in your packet today, as I believe to be correct, depict the 43rd Street right-of-way, the difference in size from 42nd to 43rd. And then following the city charter and vacation right-of-way, there will be a scheduled value that would be determined at a later date for what's actual to the square foot for translation from one partial to the next. The easements have all been under franchise rights, which, as a Nebraska licensed professional, Iowa has a franchise right, therefore, utilities are not legally recorded as an easement. The utilities are simply allowed to take place in public right-of-way. So through the due diligence on our end, we had to go out and literally prove through excavation and surveying that no utilities laid parallel to, but are perpendicular. So 42nd Street is completely clear of all utilities, with the exception of a plus or minus 50-foot area on the east side of 19th Street, where they currently leave utility easements but share 42nd Street right-of-way for a short duration of time. The other concern was posed by Mrs. Geiger in the submittal of our wishes through planning and Mrs. Geiger's property in our research all the way back into the early '30s, as far back as 1932, the records that are available to us through USGS or through aerial photography, 42nd Street has always been, in history, a gravel road. And along with that gravel road, it had drainage on north and south sides of that street. Sometime around 2003, 2004, latter part of 2004, USGS shows that the road has disappeared. But it's not a day-to-day calendar, and nor can we prove to you who took out the road. The north side drainage appears to be what was left. Somewhere in the development of South Point Industrial Park, and we haven't researched all these records out, but what we found is the business plan for South Point Industrial Foundation left a storm inlet on the east side of 19th Street, somewhere around centerline of where the 42nd Street right-of-way should be if it was ever built. That property of, known as the Geiger Family Trust today, this document also is requesting a legal name change of the property so that it would be changed to Mrs. Geiger's full legal name versus the Geiger Family Trust, which, by the way, we have no problem with Historically, under federal storm guidelines and including state of Iowa and county guidelines from Potawatomi County, storm water is to be managed at or less than historical flow rates. Is, while I'm not an attorney, I'm a developer, we do not have legal counsel here today to represent us, but it's our understanding and our willingness to manage the historical flows. Our request posed back to council, including planning, and has been publicly stated at planning level, at a point when the Geiger parcel of property, if it ever is improved or developed, they would be imposed upon to follow the same current guidelines that we have to follow. So while today, storm water's being discharged at a rate, and our engineers at Thompson, Dresen and Dorner have done a preliminary calculation, and we are already negotiating with our client to manage the storm water, under the new storm water management plan, which is a two-year storm event holdback before discharge or release can take place, which is also our understanding that this is the first time in South Point's development history that anyone in that area is managing under the new storm water guidelines. So it's a sizable event that we're holding back. And we're willing to work with all city departments to comply with the requirements for the development of the property. And we graciously ask that you consider moving forward the proposal as it's laid out today and reassuring Mrs. Geiger that we will manage our responsibilities and the storm water.
And kind of in summation of your question, Al, when it's replatted, this body won't have any more relationship with that property, but as they apply for a building permit, city staff will, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
And our intention is to work with staff through the preliminary side all the way up to the final submittal side so that when we get here, A, we're not wasting staff time, we're going to submit a plan that's been in front of them. We've already met with multiple departments, laid out what our plan and our business plan is. Everything will be submitted to meet City of Council Plus requirements, including Potawatomi County.
And it's a good-looking project.
Thank you, sir.
It certainly fits with the concept of making that area into a, into an industrial area, if you will. We need more development of that nature. And so this project fits in well with that, with that vision. And I appreciate your work because with these projects comes huge amounts of concrete that's going to be laid down. And that, that does change the drainage dynamics considerably. So a lot of work has to be done, as the folks here are painfully aware of as they move forward with this project. So again, if you and all the neighbors are happy with this, then it seems like that this is a doable thing.
Thank you very much for working with the neighbors. It speaks very, very highly of you and your company to work together, to avoid any disputes, and to be good neighbors with one another, and you, Mrs. Geiger, as well. It's fantastic to see it, and I wish we, we see it fairly often, but I wish we'd see it even more often, where people talk and that communication really goes a long way.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Thank you.
I would like to point out that the staff recommendation to the planning commission and the planning commission's recommendation to this council was that there'd be a reservation of the easements for utilities. Based upon what has been presented today, it appears that that would not be necessary. And it does not, for reviewing the resolution, that does not appear to be in there, so.
The utilities are, I think, if I may, excuse me, I don't know your name, sir.
Dick Wade.
Mr. Wade?
Wade.
Wade, I'm sorry. Mr. Wade, my understanding of this is what they're asking for is to maintain the franchise rights as they've been presented. So currently, right now, the utilities that are there are in exercise of the franchise because they're in a short portion of the 42nd Street right-of-way. If you go back through the comments, they're also asking that we meet all utility easements, including the covenances that have to be submitted for the final plat. So when that's done and gets caught up with what's happening today, before the plat could be theoretically recorded, the utility easements that are in play would be 360 around the perimeter of the property, then this franchised area would be in a utility easement because they're within 10 feet of 19th Street right-of-way. And the utility easements are 10 feet wide. So they would completely pick up these three utilities that are lying there, which is Mid-America, Cox Communications, and.
The gas company, probably.
Century, CenturyLink, excuse me, yes. So there's three that are there. Those would be taken care of. The one clarity that we were trying to make all the way through the process is that the two easements that run parallel would be vacated with 42nd. Hopefully, that if we bring all the lots together and these two little forgotten easements are there, someone rings the doorbell in 10 years and says, gee, we want to bore or tear up your parking lot to lay some utilities in a utility easement that exists. So, and then we've also, while we're talking easements, agreed to allow a 15-foot-wide drainage easement beyond the east property, which, Mrs. Geiger, that would be your west property line. So enhancing from the 10 to. So enhancing from the ten to fifteen to give some more right-of-way access so that in the future, if it's developed, there's a larger ingress egress connection from Veterans Memorial to the new Forty Third. And also if South Point was to develop further and move south, they're going to need to deal with additional storm water discharge as well. So I think in our due diligence, we've tried to do our best to make sure that our client can build what they're looking to build on the property and be a good neighbor in the community, research all the aspects that are out there that could be a stoppage for the moving forward of this development and try to mitigate any surprises that we could possibly find. We're human, there might be something out there that we haven't turned over, but I believe that we've done a fairly decent job of, of doing our homework to try and make sure our clients' best interests are looked out for and to make sure the City of Council Bluffs has some interest that they're not going to be regretful of and to be a good neighbor. Mrs. Geiger, we've tried to look at your concerns as well. So again, thank you for your time and we really appreciate all of you and taking the time to meet with us so that we could go over all concerns. And all city offices have been very cooperative, very cooperative with us, so there's no concerns.
Any other questions for him? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I have a question for Greg on that. So the final, the write-up in the final resolution, I know you don't speak for the utilities, but from everything in your realm, are you satisfied with how everything is portrayed in the, in the final resolution?
Next point it said that there would be easements reserved.
It'd just be on the, only where it crosses perpendicular to the right-of-way, yes.
So that's the number seven on there, that number seven, Dick? So we need to adjust that for tonight or?
The standard ten-foot franchise utility easement language is staged on the proposed final plat. That's what we're talking about, is that ten foot? Okay.
That needs to be extended across the vacated right-of-way because it didn't exist in the original plan.
This may be a minor point on, on how we take up the resolutions this evening. It, it appears to me that, maybe I'm wrong, that it would be appropriate to take up Resolution fifteen dash two seventeen first, that vacates Forty Second Avenue and then take up the Resolution fifteen dash two sixteen that grants plat approval. That, that order strikes me as making a little bit more sense than doing it the other way around and, and holding one conditional upon the other.
We just do them simultaneously, Dick?
We could.
It would be the other way to address it, just in one motion.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Your points were taken.
And I'm more, more comfortable when the, the council write-up that, that I first read online talked about a, a range of, of landmass square foot, so, but the resolution that I saw this afternoon was more specific as to the actual number of acre, point seven six, whatever, whatever it was, so that...
Seven six nine.
Okay. And that was, that was my other concern is the write-up originally talked about twenty-five to thirty thousand square foot, which was too vague for me, so I feel more comfortable about that.
Any other questions on the public hearings? Anything on the ordinance for first reading?
I, I was looking over the, the text of the, the hunting regulations here and, and there were three changes under four point twenty-one, point zero two zero. And notice the first reference under A to the antlerless deer, female turkey, then in sub B, it talks about the antler deer and female turkey. So that's a little bit different because now we're talking about deers with antlers. And then down at the bottom, it, it talks about antler deer and male turkey. And I, I'm by no means a, a hunter and I may have just embarrassed myself in front of the hunting community, but I, I thought that perhaps that middle one there was, was a typo and...
No, actually, on the, that, the button buck, sometimes you get, when you're out there, they get that confused, even though we don't like, well, don't encourage button bucks to be taken, sometimes they are by mistake. The female turkey to, I guess, control the population, we, we want to take care of the female, you know, those are the ones that we're actually hoping the hunters will get.
Yeah.
If down the road, and the reason I put the, the male turkey or the jake at the, the last one, in the event that we do have some sort of a, a program that DNR develops to allow us, if we take X number of females, that we can get, you know, tags for the, the jakes as well. So hopefully down the, the road that that will happen. I want council to remember this is, we're kind of starting off, this is going to take a year or two to develop. The tags are actually twenty-four fifty. Now depending on the avian flu and how that drives up the price of turkey, it might be cheaper to go to the store and, and buy one than it is to take one of these turkeys at twenty-four fifty. So don't be surprised if we probably take less than ten or so to begin with this, this season. The other thing is we're limited to two tags per person, there's, there's two seasons to this, and you get one tag per person per season. So, you know, if I end up with fifty-five to sixty hunters, that means potentially the max we could ever get were a hundred, you know, between a hundred and a hundred and twenty tags given out. And I guarantee you, most of them aren't going to spend twenty-four fifty to get a, a tag for one of our turkey, so.
Thanks for clarifying that. I just caught my eye and just thought I'd, I'd ask.
Well, the concept though, and the, the turkey versus deer is, is the same thing, though. You want to, you want to eradicate the, the female, right, yeah.
It's starting to sound like Donald Trump.
There's no, there's no good comment for that, there's no good reply for that one, is there?
I am not quoting Donald Trump.
Anything else on the public hearing?
Just to, just to clarify, so you're, you're, on six A, it, it's to deny the request, correct?
That was one option.
Oh, that's one option. Oh, okay.
You were at two options, you were throwing it in the night.
I wrote that down because I want to deny. Okay, very good, thank you.
All right. Resolutions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, Matt, I apologize. Yeah, I was talking about six A, that, as I think that would have a negative impact on, on the traffic, especially when Madison will be closed, you know, hit and miss here for the next month or so. You got to go around and...
They fix the curbs, they will come up and grind the asphalt and reopen it for a while with the ground asphalt and then they'll overlay that asphalt in a couple days, so it'll be a pretty...
I think we're waiting to do asphalt.
Before you do the grinding.
Just, just let me know when you asphalt because then I, I will be stuck on my street and I don't want to miss a council meeting because I'm asphalted into my house. That's my only request.
We'll, we'll send a rescue.
No, you can't get up the street, you can't get there.
Oh, we'll find a way.
I'll have to walk over the hill.
Yeah, I'm gay, so that'll be all right.
It's a bit steep, but we'll figure a way.
Yeah, I can rustle them out of the woods. Unless you don't want me at the council meeting, then I won't be here.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt it on that one. The, you know, seven AM to seven PM, Monday to Friday, seven AM to four PM on Saturdays, one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and forty trucks a day, you know, school time, I think the police department and public works raised very valid concerns about Harry Langdon, plus all that dust. Even if you have water, it's right near Highclare neighborhood and...
Well, even worse than, even worse than that, I, I drove down to look at this site and it's right across from a oil distributing business. And, and it wouldn't be a shock to anybody to, to know that oil and dust don't particularly go well together. And so that, that commercial entity had real concerns and, and counter-intuitively, the prevailing wind in that particular location generally drifts to the north because of the topography. And so, so I visited with the folks at Red Giant Oil and, and they said, yes, indeed, that they've also experienced problems with, with wind flow and, and particulates in the air. And so, so we want to be very mindful, not only of the traffic and, and the impact on, on residents, but also the, the impacts on, on those two very important businesses in our, in our community. So, so I just wanted to add that, that there's another good reason to, to be concerned about this particular proposal.
It's just a lot of trucks.
Yeah.
A lot of noise and a lot of dust for that location. I just can't see that being a good fit.
Right. We're already dealing with it further south and it's, that's, that's the first thing that I thought of.
Are there questions on the resolutions?
I'm going to stay now on six B, Mercy. I don't know who signs up first, Greg, if you're signing it first or is the Corps signing it first?
Sure, that's fine.
But there's a new commander now, so the names need to change. If you guys are signing it first, I can give you the info. Is that agreement?
Yeah.
You already got it? It has the old one on it.
Is, on six C, is there any, I imagine we're probably very preliminary stage or perhaps not of which intersections we're talking about? I, I presume ones would be prioritized that have the most traffic and/or emergency type service.
Yeah, we have a...
So it doesn't look like quite enough to do all the traffic, all ninety-seven.
This is the second or third year we've done this, so we, it's been prioritized every year on, on our, not only our highest traffic, but the ones that seem to have the most problems with lightning strikes and losing power. And so they are prioritized based on, you know, something other than alphabetical. It's, it's based on need and...
And I appreciate you reminding me. I had forgotten that, of course, we have been doing this for the last few years now. And do you know about how many, I think, what do we have, a total about ninety-seven, ninety-two, three intersections with lights where we're at with...
What is it, twenty or twenty to thirty in this one, remember? Yeah, I don't recall, but it's somewhere in that range, so I'm sure after this project, we should be more than half.
Okay.
For sure.
Thank you.
And they may not all need it, you know, again, it kind of depends on how often they have light. Some, for some reason, tend to get struck by lightning more than others, impacted by power outages than others.
You know, and that, if I may, that reminds me, I had, I had a question and other people have asked me it as well. As part of the interstate expansion, there are those two, as you're heading north on the South Expressway and you just cross under the interstate and there are those two intersections relative, relatively close to one another. Some of the lighting seems like it's dimmed. It's hard to see and I...
They have special louvers on them that prevent you from seeing both signals at the same time.
Is that what that...
So it doesn't confuse you as to which one is the one that you're supposed to. So it's supposed to, as you get close enough to it, you can only see the one.
That's interesting, I hadn't thought about that.
And the, the, you're talking about north of the interstate.
Yeah, yeah.
The south one actually goes away in about a year anyway.
I see.
Totally disappears, but that was done so that if, if you look next time, you can see they're pretty close to one another as you drive in.
At that speed, yeah. Oh, thank you, that makes...
Seeing two different colors may confuse you as which one you're supposed to be watching. So there's special optics on it that prevent that.
It'd be good, it reminds me of downtown, you know, around Fourth on West Broadway, those turns where their lights are. You know, I myself have almost missed it because you see the one right after you and you forget the closer one and it can, you know, just, it's not quite an optical illusion, but it feels like it. So thank you, I appreciate worrying about that.
I understand that there's some pole removal further south today on South Expressway, whether it was a signal or light pole, I don't know. I also understand it was an unplanned removal and that arrest followed, but that's what I understand.
Well, that does happen.
It does.
Yes.
On D and E, my first inclination when I read about adding positions, oh, you knew that you were going to get questioned. I, I just appreciate the, the fact that you balanced the cost of the new position against what we're actually spending so that it's very clear that it makes good fiscal sense to do it, to do it that way. And, and to Don, I appreciate the fact that the recycling facility is almost a net, net revenue. I'm, I'm going a little bit beyond what's on the agenda, but I just...
Don's not really adding, it just...
They're classified as temporary employees right now through, through a temporary agency. The two people, there's already two people there that were paying...
They're long-term employees that...
But they go from temp to city, though.
Yes.
So it's kind of like adding...
They used to do, for kind of to set the stage, they'd do a civil service exam for civil service employees. And this goes back to my wife's son, who was a temporary employee at the golf course. He is a graduate of, has an associate's degree from Iowa Western in landscape management. Kevin Davey thought he was the best employee he'd ever had. And so a position came open and he applied for the job and took a test that, that our previous HR director gave him, all on customer service and sales.
For groundskeeping?
Yeah.
Okay.
So he got one point less than the passing grade and could never take the test again because I now have the job, so he's out. But Don's employees work in the recycling center, they wouldn't pass the test we used to give because it didn't pertain to the job, so.
Huh, that's crazy. Seems odd.
It was just a test no matter what you...
Yeah.
For any position?
It's not, it wasn't the same for any position because some tests were geared towards law enforcement or fire department, but it didn't vary very much from those non-public safety tests. Were pretty similar for everybody. The kid came home and said, yeah, I, you know, I can change a sprinkler head like nobody else. I, I know everything about chemicals, but I didn't know anything about customer service experience and, you know.
Well, you have a wide range of tasks before you, don't you?
I do, and, and actually, since you brought up both D and E, they're, they're somewhat related and somewhat not related. When I first started, Mayor Walsh and then the Chief of Staff both said to me, we've got this temporary agency that manages our seasonal employees, we've got a few temporary employees, but none of that's managed through the HR department. It's our people, I mean, obviously not our, our employees, but it's people that work for the city, but we have each supervisor just contact them on their own. And so there's twelve, fifteen different supervisors contacting them and really no structure or management of that. And so they, they told me pretty quickly that's something we need to get our arms around and, and so I did pretty quickly again. It, it made perfect sense to me. And, and as we did that, we kind of identified a few outliers and this is one of those that we've got people classified as temporary, but we've got them in there on a long-term basis. They really should be long-term, full-time, regular employees and we just, we need to make that the right way, so.
And I, I want to give a, a high compliment to the mayor. I think, you know, in the past, we've had vigorous discussions about, you know, the council's role and the jobs and, and classification and so forth. And this, this is taking jobs that are there and since they've become permanent, having them go through the proper process through the council, and I, I want to thank him for, as, as part of the restructuring and modernizing the executive, the administration of the city to save money and to be more efficient, this is a fantastic example...
Yeah.
...of doing that and involving the council and the, and the part of it that we should be involved in, so thank you.
I didn't realize how significant the, the...
I didn't realize how significant the agency fees are, and that's, I mean, that's a heck of a saving, so I appreciate that.
And again, that's the value of having one, you know, funneled through one department as opposed to twelve or fifteen different people, but nobody sees the whole picture.
Well, and that was, you know, kind of dovetailing that, Sharon said to me this weekend, you know, I read the budget every year, and, you know, the hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, where was that? Well, it was split out amongst the departments that use temporary employees, rather than funneled through the HR department where it should have been.
So it wasn't as visible then?
That's the number that would have gotten my attention, that we were paying to an outside agency to provide the services, but line broke out that way.
You know, as part of the very, the efficiencies and the restructuring, you find that sort of thing. And so it's great that we are finding that.
Appreciate it.
And to Wendy, I'm sorry, and to Wendy, I mean, I know you're going to continue, but I think you're going to find a lot of things, and I appreciate the job that you're trying to do to streamline the city and ultimately save the taxpayers some money. So it's, I just, I can't even imagine what sort of things you guys have to comb through. Yeah, I don't want to know, I don't want to ask.
I was just going to ask, ask Don that comment first, that you've been a good steward of the solid waste enterprise fund, and we've previously addressed the fact that the enterprise funds are meant to be, you know, or that the enterprise operations are meant to be self-sustaining. And I think you previously alluded that you were, managed to keep that into the, into the black. And do you still feel good about the state of the enterprise fund? And more importantly, would you see the need for any increase in fees in the near future?
With our long-term contracts with Red River and also our tipping fees at the landfill, we're pretty, we'll be consistent over the next five to seven years. So hopefully, unless the recycling markets really bottom out, I mean, we've, you know, you've got an ebb and flow with the recycling markets right now. They're pretty closer to the bottom where they've been for the last couple of years. But just to kind of give you an idea on these two, this is, these two positions kind of evolved from, you know, a part-time situation, and then when we started taking in more product from some of the other communities, they just, you know, we kept adding hours. We just took in, we're going to, just signed a contract with Harrison County to pull in their recyclables, which will amount to about a thousand ton a year. We charge them twenty dollars a ton, plus whatever revenue we get off the recycling, so that should, you know, generate approximately eighty thousand dollars a year on that, so that... I mean, if, depending on the insurance on these, you know, anything over above what we're currently paying, we'll be, you know, taking care of that. But yes, we are, Tony does a great job of trying to maintain our costs out there, and we're fortunate that, you know, we can move forward with the approval of Baylor and some other things that we're planning in the near future, so.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions, anything for John, while he's up there?
Well, we can move into compensation review soon, so.
Might as well just...
So don't go far.
Don't go far.
I don't go far.
All right, yeah, let's finish up the resolution stuff, hold on. Anything on the resolutions? Anything on the applications for permits?
I'd like to vote on seven A, six separately.
And I just didn't know, did we want to talk about that one? I mean, again, Dick, I don't ever know what is and isn't going to stick for, if we were to say no to like... I mean, do you have any input for us, or?
I guess, I do not know what the, what their history's been this past twelve months. I do not get copied on.
Oh, you don't? There was a bunch of drug and some disturbance, I shouldn't think what it was.
There were, yes, appeared to be multiple assaults.
Aggravated assault, serious assault.
I think there was some drug issues in there.
Chief, did you want to speak to that?
Six, lipstick. Sorry.
Oh, another one on our agenda?
No, not yet.
Okay.
But it will be.
Um, that establishment has had some issues. The problem we're running to is just like some of the other ones, that can't necessarily be tied directly to the establishment or their fault. It's just some of the clientele that come and go.
Because it's hard to tell from what we get, if it's people actually there, or if it's just...
What I try and do in preparation for this is if I get the chance, I will look at the specific incidents and make sure if it's tied to the establishment and notify you of that.
Oh, okay.
That way, we have a heads up.
So these are the ones that are tied to the establishment?
Or not, you're saying, you're saying they're just...
Or not necessarily tied, okay, gotcha.
That's what I was trying to figure out, yeah, is it, because you can't tell, like, yeah, so it was just people that got, happened to get in trouble while they were there that had the drug, then it wasn't actually like employees?
Sometimes it's the clientele we draw, and sometimes it's the establishment itself.
Of course, of course, you know, it's also the type of business you're running and how you run it. I think this doesn't happen at most places, the vast majority in town, because the owners don't allow it. And so I have significant concerns of it tying back to the owners in that sense, if nothing else.
I had a question as to whether they were maybe working with the police department, because the last incident was January, so I didn't know if maybe, since obviously things have calmed down since January, have they got a program in place working with you guys?
They are, I'm not aware of it, they may be working with our afternoon or night shift. It kind of ties back to our overall perspective on liquor establishments and the work we've been doing in the Hunter Block. I haven't gotten the update for this last week, but the previous week, we were down to two calls for the whole week, which is a significant reduction from past summers, and things are going really well. We're trying to move along the same lines we talked about earlier with grassroots, and making sure that the businesses, we're trying to help them succeed, but at the same time, making sure they're accountable for their actions. So that's the direction we're going, and the, both the night shift and the afternoons understand that. Nights is more aware of it because they're more direct during that timeframe, but afternoons deals with it as they can.
So you're not overly concerned about...
At this point, not right now.
Okay.
I will make sure that night shift has a chat with them and says, you know, make sure that they know we're paying attention, we don't want to see any more violations.
I guess just the variety of incidents and the nature of those incidents definitely got my attention. And again, you combine that with the nature of the business itself, and as the adage goes, if you don't like bird poop, don't put up a bird feeder. And, you know, it's, enough said, I guess, about that, that it's a concern.
It is.
And frankly, I have other concerns about, you know, the potential for trafficking from that sort of business, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Marcy, on seven B two, there wasn't a whole lot of information in the packet on this, so I'm assuming that we're well-prepared for the crowds. I don't know what kind of crowd is expected, noise ordinance will be adhered to, I'm hoping. And in and out, because there's just that one road, everything is contained within the parking lot. And, I mean, it was a pretty rudimentary sketch, but the parking for the attendees that they expect is not going to impact the area that they have for the concert, and they have, they're hiring people to...
It's not expected to...
It's a smaller...
It's going to be a very small event?
They did one last year, they're going to do two this year.
This is the fundraiser, right? Is this the fundraiser?
No, this is just...
That's something else.
This is just to bring in more business because they don't have a lot of leagues during the summertime.
Okay.
So this is just...
So it's not a huge concert?
No.
Okay, just ultra-sensitive based on the...
Not the Rumbles, but it'd be like the Rumbles, a local band, that would be.
Okay, I'm just gun-shy now with the grassroots thing.
I've heard this one's very nice, I've not been to it, but I've heard this one actually is nice, yeah.
Yeah, I would assume that the promoters would have some sort of additional security for this sort of thing. I'm speculating, I guess, at this point.
I can...
I'd be...
I can check.
Yeah, I'd be...
I don't think there was any issue before with the...
And I would suspect that they're...
It's pretty low-key.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking more of people living in behind that, particularly on Vine Street. You know, there've been previous complaints about, you know, late into the night, issues with public urination and fighting and whatnot.
Are you talking about Thunderbolt?
Sorry.
Vine Street is...
I'm sorry, no, not Vine Street.
Did you switch on us?
Yeah, I did, I'm sorry. No, immediately behind, yeah, on the...
Oh, okay, all right, okay, gotcha.
How do they do, always hire extra security?
Sorry to confuse there.
Yeah, I didn't know, I'm...
But I know that there have been those concerns in the past, and just if they were to provide a little bit extra vigilance further into the night, that might be a good thing for the homeowners in behind there.
I don't know if there's a lot of correlation between when those things happen, because they do, and the actual events down there. I think that's just kind of a, like, Friday and Saturday night, unfortunately, like, not tied to an event, but we know it's happening.
All right, nothing else on the applications and permits, that's the end of the agenda. Mark's not here, so something must come up, and we'll reschedule him later on, so.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you can get the protection you need from the bank you trust.
The only thing more important than knowing your money is safe is the assurance that your identity has protection. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.